All right, good evening. Welcome to Board of Trustees meeting for Grand Lake Township for Wednesday, May 25th. Could I all rise for the pledge?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we changed the meeting date to this date to accommodate for the weekend coming up. And I appreciate everybody making changes in their schedule to be here. Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
I would be happy to call the roll. Trustee Hugo. Trustee Feig.
Here.
Trustee Raridan. Trustee White.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
Myself. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, thank you.
Five members present, a quorum.
And now I would ask or seek a motion for the approval of the agenda. Motion by Trustee Feig, support by Trustee White.
Motion by Feig, supported by White for the agenda. Okay. Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Feig.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, thanks.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we will bring it back to the board and I'll seek approval of the consent agenda. Somebody would care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Supported by Treasurer Kilmer.
Supported by Kilmer. Trustee Feig.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Uh, trustee, treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Full of business, we have a very brief update on our strategic plan. New Department of Public Service Facility and Fire, Mr. Limina.
Yeah, what I can update you now is that we have moved forward with the Plant Moran Cressa as the project manager and in addition to the grid and the updates that you saw on that, you know, most important thing is that we've established that project management design framework. The meetings are scheduled initially, we started every week, probably don't need to actually meet every week at this point, but we're just doing it through teams meeting, so it's moving along exactly like it should. We're in that discovery phase where we have to review the space needs assessment. We've done that with both the fire department and as of this morning with the Department of Public Works. And again, if when we did that space needs assessment, I think it was like around 2017 maybe. You know, at that point, what's changed, you know, but now in 2022 and change and moving forward, you know, even with COVID and, you know, working remotely, some things like that. So we'll see what the design team brings to the table. But we are looking and had some pretty decent meetings with the project managers from Plant Moran Cressa so far. Just to talk about what our expectations are, they've reviewed our space needs assessment. They'll make recommendations as well moving forward. They're well versed, they've built a lot of these types of facilities, so I feel good about that. Very few minor changes that we've made from the Redstone Space Needs Assessment. Fire Department did theirs on Monday, May 23rd with minimal changes. The project managers will review and make their recommendations will be the next step. We're working on a draft contract with them. We should have that before you at your next meeting. And then the next step will be the development of the timeline and a very preliminary budget to see if we're in line. Again, the numbers that we put forward when we did the RFQs included what we knew at that time. Again, outdated, things are more expensive, especially with the supply chain issues. So we just have to make sure that we can afford it moving forward and what that financing looks like. By the time we get that preliminary budget and timeline together, I think it's important that we bring that Plant Moran Cressa project management team to a meeting to get in front of the board so that you guys can see who we've selected, who we're working with. You guys need to have the confidence in this team, not just us, and then they can present that timeline. Again, we initially said September of 2023. In all honesty, I think it's probably, you know, May of 2024, maybe for completion of the project. But we'll know more as they start putting that together. Update on Fire Station Two is moving right along. Again, the board approved us to move forward using ARPA funds for that. The design is complete. They are preparing to submit the site plan approval. I saw that application this morning going into planning, so that's a good sign. Again, municipal building, we still do it just as if we are anyone else applying in the township. We run it through site plan approval to make sure that the township isn't doing anything that we wouldn't allow someone else to do. As soon as that is complete, we'll begin doing the, sending RFQs out for the trades and putting that thing together. So that project is moving along exactly like it should be without further delay. Plans look good, we'll get that out to the board once we know that the site plan hasn't changed anything and show you what that looks like. Maybe it might be a good time, in fact, to get you guys, now that the summer weather's here, is we can, you know, do a road trip if anybody's interested and give you an opportunity to see some of the inside workings, take the tour of Fire Station Number Two, maybe get you in to show you what the water towers look like and the electronics that go in there, where our pump stations are, let you see some of the assets that the township has. We can just grab, you know, either the senior center van or grab a bus and take everybody on a tour, have the department heads available to answer questions.
I think that'd be real good.
That's all I had for today.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Limina? So those guys designing the fire department, have you seen this movement towards minimalism?
Yeah, we call that daily life of the administrator.
Okay. Without further ado, we'll move on to new business. And clerk wants to speed up the ballot processing and has a motion here to, the board will consider the purchase of a Hart high-speed scanner for the clerk's department for $98,875 and authorize the superintendent to sign the purchase agreement. Clerk Robertson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor. As you see in the, from the information in your packet, we wish to purchase, I would like to, the department wished to purchase a high-speed scanner. With the increase in absentee ballots associated with both COVID and obviously the passage of no reason absentee voting in 2018, we've seen a huge increase in the number of people that are on our absentee voter, absentee voter list. And we anticipate as many as 16,000 absentee ballots in the coming election. Just a few weeks ago, Lynn Henry, my very capable deputy clerk, attended a demonstration of this equipment in Livingston County. And we were very impressed with it indeed, at the speed at which they can count ballots. And we believe that it will not only make the business of counting the ballots quicker, but it's going to be more secure and it's going to save us costs in other areas of clerk operations. We're asking for, for the $98,875. However, we have already determined that we can apply the $25,500 reimbursement grant to this cost, which would reduce the cost still further to $73,375. So I think it's a worthwhile investment. We'll be able to return the AV counterboard to this room rather than at the high school. It will save us costs with regard to the movement of equipment by our Department of Public Services. It will make it easier for us to administer the election from this location with, with obviously Lynn's office right across the hall, my office right across the hall. This, just to give you an idea of how fast this is, we go from, right now, we would have four ballots per minute. This takes it to 140 ballots per minute. And just to give you an idea of the human cost, in the 2020 election, I believe our, our election staff was here till 3:30 or 4 o'clock in the morning because of the work that was involved, the volume and, and the, all the, everything that took place at that, that evening. We believe we can cut that obviously significantly down, hopefully several hours, and get people home at a reasonable hour. Lynn worked basically around the clock for 24 hours to get that election done. And that's a lot to ask of folks because it is, it takes, makes for a very long evening. I would also mention, and I mentioned this last, and I don't want to hit it too hard, but I was in conversation with Senator Ruth Johnson's office just within the last week. And there is the possibility, and I say it may, I'm, I'm, I'm not counting on this necessarily, but apparently the Secretary of State has asked for $100 million in the, in the budget that's currently being negotiated in Lansing. She's not going to get that much, but she's going to get something. And some of that money may be available for equipment purchases for local governments. And may, it may be a situation where we may be able to be reimbursed after the fact of this. So it would reduce the, the cost still further. But that is, I want to be very clear on that, that's a very subjective thing or uncertain thing. It could happen, but we can't rely on it, we have to rely on our own resources. And I think this is a very worthwhile expenditure. And again, another item that is important about this is that it allows for greater scrutiny and greater security with regard to these ballots. As these ballots are fed through the machine, there's an auditing trail from the very first ballot to the last. It's easier for the respective election inspectors and challengers to observe the, the, any issues that might arise with a ballot. And it will make, it will make it much, much easier for us to not only do our work, but also to do it in a secure fashion. So with that, I am asking for your support for the scanner.
Trustee Feig. I just have a couple of quick questions. Do any other jurisdictions in Genesee County have this?
Yes, the city of Flint and Flint Township.
So far.
And, and I would say that Hart, the manufacturer, is recommending the high-speed scanner for any community that has more than 10,000, anticipates more than 10,000 absentee ballots. So we clearly fall into that threshold. We have a, we have a current permanent AV list of over 13,000. And we had, had as many as 16,000 absentee ballots in the 2020 election.
And forgive my ignorance, one quick question regarding the counting of ballots. Is it the case where, let's say the polls close at eight? Is that normal?
That, correct.
And then you start feeding this machine with the absentee ballots? Or can that be done like during the week?
Would you care to elaborate on that procedure?
We start at 7:00 AM when you have that many ballots. So at 7:00 AM when the polls open, that's the first time that we can start counting ballots.
Okay.
And then we cannot, even if with the new equipment, if we happen to get done before 8:00 PM, we cannot finish until 8:00 PM because that's state law. So the ballot, they have to be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, regardless whether it's the AV counting board or the polling locations. Now, when it's a smaller election, we don't have the election workers come in that early. We try to do our time. So if it's just a Goodrich schools, we didn't have them come in until 1:00 in the afternoon in November of last year. So it just depends what election it is also.
Okay, very good.
Make the motion.
I just have one question and it's, I, I support this, but can we get, you, you mentioned using ARPA funding in this. Could we, at some point at a future meeting, could we get a, what we're using the ARPA funds on? Because it seems to be getting spread out and I have no idea what we're using it all on this year and the next couple of years. So.
Absolutely, we, we can provide it. This would be, if you guys approve this, this will be the third project that's approved for ARPA funds so far. And so really we're, the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Barn at this point has proved up to $90,000. That's nearing completion. We have the Fire Station Number Two upgrade is we, SLFRF Project 2022-2. And if you approve this, this will be SLFRF 2022-3. So I'll just put that in a, and just keep a running total and keep that format, maybe that would be helpful.
And we still have half the money still coming to us, so.
Yep, we had that initial 1.9 million coming in and we expect to see the other half coming in the next two months.
We have quite a bit of time before we have to have it spent, so. Any other questions for Clerk Robertson or Deputy Clerk Henry? So this means that we'll have the results before 11 o'clock news?
Well, certainly far earlier in the evening than three in the morning, but not, but maybe not quite that early.
We're changing the process now of transmitting results.
What was that, one more time?
We're changing the transmitting results before we learn a machine like, oh, we can use the modems.
Oh.
They're going away from the modems from the whole state basically because of the election fraud. So it'll be back to either with the county, we used to have a site here at Grand Lake Township.
Right.
And then they drop it in and then they would load it from their computer and play it from the county. Or we'll be running everything down to the county. We've had to do that for the last few elections in the evening. So actually it's going to be a little bit longer than what it used to be in the last two years that somebody did the modems.
I was a fan of this a while back, but I'm glad we weren't one of the first. I'm sure they've had several iterations of the software and equipment and what have you. So it probably paid off to not be the first to have it.
The high-speed scanner.
Right.
When that came out, there wasn't absentee ballots, so it wasn't even thought of, purchased at that price.
Right.
Because no one did that amount of absentee ballots since we came out. So it wasn't much, it's needed now, and it's just going to go more that way.
Exactly. Okay, yes, Mr. Limina.
One thing I do want the board to note in your motion, if you would include, I included it in the cover sheet, but the purchase will include the proposed annual service and maintenance agreement for the years six through 10 in the amount of $15,490 annually to be billed at the time of service. If you could include that in your motion to purchase, because we're pre approving, it will check the box on the form and we're pre approved and locking down that price for our service agreements for years six through 10.
Very good.
Okay, somebody care to make a motion?
I believe Trustee Feig did a moment ago. And I will, I will second that motion if that's all right?
Sure.
Okay. Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Feig.
Yes.
Uh, tr, uh, myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Item B, the board will consider Resolution 22-7 for the adoption of the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We have with us Park Director Linehan. Good evening.
Good evening, members. As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had the public hearing for the five-year Parks and Rec Master Plan. There were very little changes that were made after that, mainly some DNR reporting that we had to do. So tonight before you is Resolution 22-7 to adopt the plan. If anybody has any questions about the plan, I can address that now. After it is approved, it will get submitted to the DNR, which will allow us, starting for next fiscal year, to apply for the Natural Resource Trust Fund grants and the land-water conservation grants, since we do have the cell phone tower issue taken care of.
Very good. Congratulations on pointing out the cell phone tower issue, that that was a problem to begin with, but also finding a resolution to it, so.
Thank you.
We'll have to explain that in greater detail in the future to our residents. Mr. Feig?
I didn't know about that, you know, cell phone tower, you know, resolution. In a nutshell, what is that?
Okay, so when you have a land-water conservation grant or a natural resource trust fund grant as part of the process with the DNR, that property is encumbered for perpetuity for Parks and Recreation use. When the cell phone tower was put up on the property, it was a non-conforming recreation use. So per the DNR and actually the land-water conservation grant is a National Park Service grant that's administered through the DNR, there'd have to be a satisfactory resolution to that, so.
There was?
Yes.
What, what was the resolution? They said it's okay?
Uh, well, they, they changed the policy and how, how they were looking at cell phone towers. So we looked at that new policy and argued our point. And without having to create new parkland to make up for that, they allowed it, so.
But in the meantime, Mr. Linehan was out looking for lots of different, looking at various parcels and we were sending those over to the DNR, asking that, hey, would this property help us to offset? Because it was, you know, not just the Hart that was encumbered that's fenced off, but it was the fall line of the cell phone tower. So you can imagine how much property that includes.
Yeah, and any easements and that sort of thing, a lot, a lot went into it.
So spent plenty of time looking at other parcels around the township to try and offset it. But maybe we, we're part of the impetus of changing the rules, but anyways, I'm glad that we have that behind us.
Yep.
So if anybody cares to make the motion, we'll move forward on the, Mr. White makes the motion, support by.
White makes the motion, supported by Feig. Very good. Trustee Feig.
Yes.
Uh, trustee White.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, item C, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of new doors for the auditorium from FBH Architectural Security in the amount of $12,281.43 and authorize the township superintendent to execute all documents. Mr. Limina or? Okay, Ms. Roberts, our executive coordinator.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. These are just doors, the seven doors that are, that you see in here. We're replacing those doors with a new auditorium remodel.
They'll be wood.
Yep, they will be wood doors.
wooden doors and.
And we'll replace the glass, replace the hinges, use existing hardware.
I've seen them, they look beautiful and the room, from what the designs I've seen, will look very nice.
Yes.
And very becoming of the township. Is that a local company? I'm not sure.
I think they're, I'm, Flint, that's what I was thinking, they were out of Flint. So, and they did, I believe that they're the ones that did our security glass in the front.
All right, somebody care to make a motion? Trustee Feig.
Trustee Feig makes the motion, supported by White.
Yep.
Very good. Uh, trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Feig.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, future agenda items, I like the idea of going out and looking at a few of these things, Mr. Limina, with our board, if board's interested in doing that. We could schedule a time to do that.
Looking at.
Um, well, we've got a number of projects. One is the fire department, as Mr. Limina had mentioned.
Okay.
Looking at maybe a couple of our water projects. We've got a new building up at, out at the park that's being renovated. We've got some projects out at the park that we could show the board members why they need some work. So, tour of a few things, so that might be a future agenda item.
I'll put something together on it and then we'll do a poll, doodle poll or something where we can grab everybody's availability and again, just plan on, you know, maybe an hour and a half or two hours and we can do it on a non-meeting night or do it on a fill-in a meeting night, whichever, and make our rounds.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Limina, for future agenda that?
Uh, I didn't really prepare anything to see where you guys might need the update on our strategic agenda. So if, if anybody has any idea, go ahead and send it to me. Otherwise I'll look at what has the most recent updates and we'll present that to you in, in three weeks.
Sounds good. Mr. White, anything on zoning board appeals?
We had a meeting last night and I believe there's one set in June.
Okay. Meeting last night was with regard to mall on Saginaw Street?
Yes, that's where Detroit Wing Company is, that plaza, little strip mall there.
They wanted some additional parking, but.
They wanted it and unanimously rejected.
Okay. All right. Anything, Mr. Feig, with the Metro Alliance?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kilmer, anything, Treasurer's Department?
No.
Clerk Robertson, anything?
Uh, two items, very briefly. A week, next week is one of the only three weeks in this calendar year where trash day is on Thursday, not Wednesday, because of the Memorial Day holiday. So I'm mentioning it for the record so that anyone that happens to watch our cast, broadcast or see it knows that, that trash day is on Thursday next week. Second item I have, and we have, obviously conversations about our trash issue, but we got a nice letter, a little note from Carol and Gary Haran, who sent me this message. I've been meaning to read it into the record. Hello, we want to acknowledge how pleased and relieved we are with the garbage and recycle company our township has contracted with. Over the past several months, we have put out a larger quantity of items to be picked up and they were. Please acknowledge our appreciation, thank you sincerely. Gary and Carol Haran, 5540 Woodfield Court, Grand Blank. So I thought that was worthy of just a brief mention. That's my report, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. Working on a number of things, but one of the things I think that we're going to be meeting with our county commissioners to talk about, I, I don't feel like we received with the ARPA money that the county received, I'm not sure that we received our share that we should have had coming to us for some projects that we put in for, but we'll take that up with the county commissioners. But I think when you look at the millages we collect for everything, whether it's Parks and Rec County Millage, whether it's the Senior Millage, I think the Senior Millage we collect, what, Mr. Limina, about 1.4 million?
I bet, yeah.
About 1.4, 1.8 million and I think we get about $100,000 back for running, is that accurate?
Uh, $198,000.
$198,000. So anyways, I, I know that, you know, we're obviously a donor township to the county, but when it came to the ARPA funds, there's a few projects we could have used some funding for. So anyways, we'll take that up with county commissioners and we'll report back to the board, so. Okay. Anything, Mr. Laddie?
Two things, briefly. Today I was able to give Dennis the last check from the dissolution of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And happily, in wrapping up the finances, that were primarily jointly held by the city and the township, there was, at, at the state bank, they discovered an additional savings account that had about $5,800 in it, so we split that between the, the city and the township. And so that will really bring an end to the longstanding dissolution of the Parks and Rec Commission. And, and it's great, interesting tonight that, that you just adopted resolution for the plan, that you've got the, the solution for the cell tower hiccup. And things are, I'm, I'm happy to see that things are moving along nicely in the Parks and Rec Department here in the township. And that will be our focus from now on. We are, we are the sole owners and drivers of our Parks and Recreation.
Very good.
And then secondly, if you would indulge Superintendent Limina and I for a quick closed session regarding an employment agreement, we would appreciate that. And by quick, I mean less than 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Before we do that, Mr. Limina, anything?
Um, yeah, just two quick things. One, last meeting, we discussed the actuarial valuation report for our post-employment retiree healthcare benefits. Told you the great news that we were 106% funded. We went from 56 to 106% funded, again, primarily as a result of changes in assumptions. I told you that I would be providing the additional information back when I got the ones that use the assumptions for PA 202. And it came back in at about 88% based upon the assumptions that we have to use for PA 202, 88.53%. Again, the biggest difference in this valuation results for PA 202 has to do with the investment rate of return at six instead of 7.35 that they use. And we actually talked to the auditors today about that Yamamoto study that they use because they were shocked at, at looking at our results of the change in our OPEB as well. Seems to be a, you know, it's an accepted actuarial standard, so we feel pretty confident in it. Obviously, it's going to be more volatile. It's, it's, doesn't have the smoothing like you see with your police defined benefit pension plan where it's smoothed out, you don't have those bigger swings. This is going to be volatile. I still believe that next year, based upon, if you look at our performance to date on our investments in that retiree healthcare vehicle, it was great last year that we made, you know, 14% or whatever it was. This year we've lost considerably. So it's going to, there's going to be a little volatility in that over the course of the next few years. I'll be surprised if it's not back into the 80s somewhere even from with the new assumptions. But, but this kind of gives you a better picture, apples to apples, using the same set of assumptions that we've always used. Again, great news, we've improved. We've improved on our funded percentage of retiree health benefits. And again, we, we give it in one lump sum, but you know, there is differences. You have to separate enterprise funds for DPW. They were probably 120% funded. And you look at, the police is the next biggest one. If you look at departments out of the general fund, they account for more than 60% of the unfunded liability there. So we were probably only, you know, 80% or 80 some percent funded when you look at the amount of retirees associated with the police department. So there's a balance there. We look at it in the whole, 88%. Again, great news. Really happy to report that. We're, we're doing the right things, we're making progress. Expect to see some volatility over the next couple of years, especially as the COVID numbers catch up and how long this inflation rate lasts and what it does to us in the market. The other thing is that we had the meeting today with a preliminary draft and reviewed that with the auditors. Happy to report that it went very well. And that is going to be before the board on June 14th. Plant Moran will be here to present the results of your audit for fiscal year 2021. We're finishing the year strong again financially. Our revenue projections were within 1%, which revenue drives everything we do, so that's a phenomenal number. Just shows you the caliber of the folks we have working for us that helped us put those projections together. But expect to see that in electronic format in the packet the week before, but you'll see the full blown, blown presentation. A lot of times you go through those comprehensive annual financial audits and when you get it, it's huge, it's complicated if you're not used to looking at them. Have no fear, they'll walk you through the highlights of it during that presentation, but it was a, it was good news today. Again, another strong performance by Grand Lake Township.
Yeah, hats off to Dennis and to the planning units department for a great job. Like Mr. Limina says, you know, we're less than 1% difference there with the budget and the actual, it's a great job projecting.
We put revenue projections out, we're 14 months in advance. And if we don't get that right, everything else falls apart. So it's 14 months in advance when you, when we set that number out there. It's always risky and hope that it, it hits where it does, but we have always been, I mean, within 5% this year, last year, 1%. I mean, it's, it, all of our expenditures are based upon how much money we have to spend and, and obviously we never know about constitutional revenue sharing, could come up and down. We benefited this year from the census numbers with the higher head count and they went back to October of 2020. So some of those helped us, but clearly, again, a really strong performance for Grand Lake Township.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executives or close?
Close session, yes, okay.
Close session, I got that right.
Yes, thank you.
To discuss employee, employment contract, employment agreement.
Okay, second, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Going into closed session at 7:34 PM.
I guess we've always called it closed.